Uh, no, I just asked for a lot.
Okay.
Hey, man, what's going on?
How's you, Hazel? I'm blessed. Yeah. Actually, I didn't get on.
Shell just told me?
Okay.
You don't like to do an airplane?
I can make, I can make.
You'll take?
You're all right. I'll just take it.
Hazel, Hazel, all right.
Meeting of the Board of Education will be called. The order, we have a quorum, so we get started with item one on the agenda. Act of reverence and pledge allegiance of the flag led by Commissioner Williams.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two on the agenda are the acceptance of minutes. We've had several meetings since our October meeting. We have minutes from September fifteenth, two thousand eight, minutes from October twenty-third, two thousand eight, minutes from October twenty-eighth, two thousand eight, November tenth, two thousand eight, and also November twelfth, two thousand eight. Board members received these minutes in their packets last week and also on Monday. I'll entertain a motion to accept our five sets of minutes. So moved? Moved by Vice President White. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Any discussion, questions, additions or deletions to the minutes that you have before you? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of accepting the pack of minutes that you have before you, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the minutes do pass. As is tradition with our school board meetings, we like to begin our meetings with a student performance. I can tell you as a grad of the district, I always was disappointed that we didn't do more recognition of our students and the positivity that we have going on in the Rochester City School District. So we like to begin our meetings with that. I'll ask my colleagues to take a seat down front and then I'll turn it over to our great principal from school number five to introduce the great debaters. I first saw them perform at an ELL ceremony at Monroe High School and I can tell you that they did a great job and also understand that they've been practicing in advance of this meeting. So thank you so much for coming out and I'd ask my colleagues to join me down front to see the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Joanne Wideman and I am the principal of John Williams School Number Five. And I have with me here the great debaters. And I want to first start off by thanking Mr. Malik Evans, board members, and Superintendent Bizar for inviting us this evening. Just to give you a little history here, last year, the sixth graders, the entire sixth grade team, which consists of over eighty children, teachers, paraprofessionals, went to see the movie The Great Debaters with Denzel Washington and Oprah Winfrey, of course, funded it. We went to see the movie to help motivate, motivate and inspire our children for the ELA exam. We were able to go to the movies because of two private donators. So, you know, when I say that the community helped us, they really helped us. They helped us with, our children have received free haircuts, clothing from Volunteers of America, I can go on and on and on. With that, the children said, Ms. Wideman, we would like to do something for Oprah Winfrey to demonstrate how much we appreciate the movie. So with the assistance from the teachers, the children wrote letters to Oprah Winfrey. I have a confession, Ms. Wideman has not sent them yet, but I am going to do it. In addition, we had an audition to do the last scene or last reenactment of The Great Debaters. Ms. Cooksey, my former assistant principal, who is now the principal of school sixteen, worked diligent with me in doing the auditions. So the children that we have today are the children who were the ones accepted to do the reenactment of the last scene from the movie The Great Debaters. So without further ado, Ms. Cooksey? On this historic occasion, we welcome the distinguished team of Wiley College, the illustrious judges, you, the audience, and through the wonder of radio, the nation. Harvard University is celebrating its three-hundredth anniversary this year and Franklin Delano Roosevelt, the fifth president of the United States. But no university, no matter how grand, how vast or awesome, can afford to live in the past. So in the spirit of tomorrow, I want to introduce to you today the debaters of Wiley College, Ms. Samantha Brooke and Mr. Farm, James Farmer, Jr. Mr. Farmer will argue the first affirmative.
Bizarre. Civil disobedience is a moral weapon in the fight for justice. But how can disobedience be moral? Well, I guess that depends on one's definition of the word. In nineteen nineteen, in India, ten thousand people gathered in Immerdale to protest the tyranny of British rules. General Reagan Dyer trapped up in a courtyard and ordered his troops to fire into the crowd for ten minutes. Three hundred and seventy-nine died. Men, women, children, shot down in cold blood. Dyer said he had taught them a moral lesson. Gandhi and his followers responded not with violence, but with an organized campaign of non-cooperation. Government buildings were occupied. Streets were backed with people who refused to ask even when being by police. Gandhi was arrested, but the British were soon forced to release him. He called that a moral victory. The definition of moral, Dyer's lesson or Gandhi's victory, you choose.
From nineteen fourteen through nineteen eighteen, for every single minute, the world was at war. Four men laid down their lives. Just think of it, two hundred and forty brave young men were hurtled to eternity for every hour of every day of every night for four long years. Thirty-five thousand hours, eight million two hundred and eighty-one thousand casualties. Two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty. Here was a slaughter, immeasurable, greater than what happened in Immerdale. Can there be anything more about it? Nothing, except to stop Germany from enslaving all of Europe. Civil disobedience is immoral because of non-violence. Fighting for your country with violence can be deeply moral, demanding the greatest sacrifice of all, life itself. Non-violence is the mask that civil disobedience wears to conceal its true-faced anarchy.
Gandhi believed one must act with love and respect for one's opponent, even if they are Harvard debater. Gandhi also believed that lawbreakers must accept the legal consequences for their actions. Does that sound like anarchy? Civil disobedience is not something for us to fear. It is after all, an American concept. You see, Gandhi draws his inspiration not from a Hindu scripture, but from Henry David Thoreau, who I believe graduated from Harvard and lived by a pond not too far from here.
My opponent is right about one thing. Thoreau was a Harvard grad and like many of us, a bit self-righteous. He once said, any member of his neighbors constitute a majority of one. Pretty idealists could never know that Adolf Hitler would agree with his words. The beauty and bearing of democracy is this. No idea prevailed without the support of the majority. The people decide the moral issues of the day, not the majority of one.
Majority do not decide what is right or wrong, your conscience does. So why should a citizen surrender his or her conscience to a legislator? We must never, ever kneel down before the tyranny of a majority.
We cannot decide which laws to obey or should ignore. If we could, I'll never stop for a relight. My father is one of those men that stands between us and chaos. A police officer. I remember the day my father's partner, his best friend, was gunned down in the line of duty. Most vividly of all, I remember the expression on my dad's face. Nothing that erodes the roots of law can be moral, no matter what name we give it.
In Texas, they lynched Negroes. My teammates and I saw a man strung up by his neck and stood on fire. We drove through a lynch mob, pissed our faces against the floorboard. I looked at my teammates and saw the fear in their eyes and worse, the shame. What was this Negro's crime that he should be hung without a trial in a dark forest filled with fog? Was he a thief, a killer, or just a Negro? Was he a sharecropper, a preacher, where his children waiting up for him? And who are we to just lie there and do nothing? No matter what he did, the mob was a criminal. But the law just left us wondering, why? My opponent says, nothing that erodes the roots of law can be moral. But there is no law in the Jim Coles South where Negroes are denied hazard. Negroes are turned weapon schools, hospitals, and not when we are lynched. Saint Augustine said, an unjust law is not law at all. That means I have a right, a duty, to resist with violence or civil disobedience. You should pray. I choose the latter.
As you can see, I have some very, very special young people. And they're really not mine anymore. They're seventh graders. These children have worked with me, along with Ms. Cooksey, for the last seven to eight Saturdays. I pick them up early in the morning and we don't finish until late in the evening, practicing the same lines over and over and over again. Because I want them to understand that in order to make it in this world, you have to work hard, you have to practice, and you have to be darn good at what you do. So I'm going to stop because sometimes I get very emotional and I can go on and on. But I just want everyone in this audience to know that this is why we're here. This is really why we're here. So in my conclusion, I'm just going to ask them to come up, say their name, where they come from, and the present school they attend. Thank you all, you've been awesome. I am Sylvia Cooksey and I'm the proud new principal of school number sixteen.
I am Ahmed Sadiq, I come from Somalia and I attend Thomas Jefferson High School.
My name is Zayquan Walters, I attend Charlotte High School and I'm from Rochester, New York.
My name is Monique Davis and I come from St. Croix and I attend Charlotte High School.
My name is Anthony Promovido, I come from Rochester, New York, and I attend Joseph C. Wilson Foundation Academy.
My name is Musa Masako, I came from Sierra Leone and I attend Marshall High School.
Thank you. We have a tradition, whenever we have students that sign up to speak before the board, we put them before all the rest of our business. With that being said, we will have, we have a list of students that will speak today. Students, when I call your name, please come up to the podium, say your name, what school you go to. You will have three minutes to address the crowd. After you hear the beep from our clerk up here, I'll ask you to conclude your remarks. I'll just say because of the number of speakers that we have, please do not place me in the unfortunate position of having to cut you off. I don't want it to be construed as rude, but if you do go over your mark, over the time, the time of the beep, I'm gonna have to cut you off to make sure that we can go to every speaker. So, so I'll call up your names by five and just as you know, the board, we're here to listen, we won't be responding to folks that speak. So thank you, students, for coming out and then hopefully when you're done, you can go home and get your homework done. We'll start with Gabra Baxter, Felicia Bevel, Adley Shaloni, Anthony Morgan, and James Lewis. So Gabra, you're up first and you'll be followed by Felicia. Is Felicia here? Go ahead. Three minutes.
My name is Adele Chick Leon. I was going to be preceded by our valedictorian, but I have a suspicion she's outside. While I respect the efforts of the school district to ensure, while I respect the efforts of the school district to ensure that every child has a good education and that no one falls through the cracks, the state of things at East High School is unacceptable. Discipline has been abandoned and in its place, we have a farce. In-school suspension is a joke. Far from being a deterrent to violence or disrespect, it is viewed instead as a hangout, a welcome break from teachers and homework. Teachers are afraid of their students and students act without fear of repercussions. Passing time is a mess of obscenities and projectiles. There are hallways that I refuse to walk down because I know I will be forced to dodge everything from pencils to sidewalk chalk, snowballs, bouts of slapboxing, and vulgar suggestions. There's a food fight every other day. During seventh and eighth period, students run down the hallway, knocking over trashcans and banging on lockers, and nothing gets done about it. And today, it escalated to a lockdown. Students who continually engage in violent or disruptive behaviors do not belong with students who value their education. Support should be offered to students whose home lives are less than ideal, but what is to be done if they refuse? How much money should be spent on trying to teach someone who doesn't want to learn? It may seem harsh to say that we should remove violent and students, violent students and students without discipline from the school, but they do not have the right to deprive others of their education, which is exactly what's happening.
Please, please, ladies and gentlemen, we have a lot of speakers, so if we interrupt with applause, we're not gonna get to everyone, so please let her continue without applause, please.
Why keep such children in school if they obviously don't want to be there? ISS certainly isn't benefiting them and they are disrupting the educational process, not to mention putting students and teachers in danger. Education is one of the areas where the needs of the many should under no circumstances be sacrificed to the whims of the few. By all means, offer encouragement and support to those students who don't get it elsewhere, but focus on educating those who consent to be educated and remember, there is a difference between falling through the cracks and jumping.
Thank you. Anthony Morgan?
Hello. My name's James Lewis, I'm from East High. I'm not Anthony.
Okay.
I don't know if it's just me, but I'm sort of, in a sick way, glad about what happened today at East High because it seemed like, a lot more people seem to care now. And I was in the middle of that lunchroom, I'm the one who sent those videos through my cellphone, if anybody would like to know who that is. I sent all those videos and I was wondering exactly why there was not one sentry in there to handle the situation at all, for a full hour until Mr. Bizar showed up. It's real, it's real sick in that East, people need to get suspended, they need to get out of that school. There's so many people in there, it's not even, it's just unnecessary. A lot of people coming from wherever they're coming from, juvie or, I don't know where they're coming from, there's a lot of them, it's like a virus. There's too many of them. And another thing I'd like to address, sorry, I'm nervous. All right, all right. One thing goes, like, I always thought, I always thought East High was safe, but then after, after what I seen today, it was not, it was just ridiculous, people throwing things, throwing garbage cans, you seen it, didn't you? Now, I know you, I know you're a good man and you wanna try to give it a different approach 'cause a lot of parents complain about their students get suspended and it's no point and they think that their son, that their son or daughter, whoever likes to get in the fights and don't care about school, is not learning anything. Even if they were in school, they still not learning, so why have them there?
Thank you. Next, next set of speakers will be Zachary, Zachary Mc, Zachary McPherson, followed by Michael Cox, Damon Garfield, Keela Roberts, Latasha Santana, and Latasha Leverage. Zachary here?
We're at capacity.
Right. Unfortunately, none of us want to get arrested, so the fire marshal has, you know, sets, sets the amount of folks that are in the room, so we only can call on those that are here. Excuse me, ma'am, please take your seat, you're out of order. Ma'am? Ma'am, please. Michael Cox? Damon Garfield? Is Keela Roberts here? Latasha Santana? Well, you know, if, if, if some of these kids are locked out, the grownups can feel free to stand up, go out there and let the kids come in, and then come back later, we can do that. If we're so concerned about hearing the students, we can do that. So any of the grownups that wanna give up their seat, let the kids come in and then they can leave afterwards. Okay. Yes. Zachary McPherson is up next. Zachary McPherson followed by Michael Cox. Damon Garfield. Keela Roberts. Just say your name, what school you're from, and you have two minutes.
My name is Damon Garfield and I'm from East High School. My name is Damon Garfield, I'm from East High School. I'm a current 12th grade student at East High School and I plan to go to college as an educator. Today, I'm here to discuss some concerns and situations and some safety and security issues that are a big problem in our school today. issues that are a big problem in our school today. First, students who want to learn and teachers who want to teach aren't able to teach effectively when there are constant distractions in the school. I feel that there should be zero tolerance, zero tolerance and severe consequences for students who, who want to fight unless defending yourself. Also, I feel that organizations like Pathways of Peace should patrol the hallways throughout the day, and even in ISS classrooms, to protect our, well, to make our schools safer, a safer environment, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Garfield.
Hi, I'm Keela Robertson, I'm a current senior at East High School, and first I'd like to thank the board for letting me address them with the issues at East High School. As a concerned student, it is an understatement to say that East High School is out of control. I feel like that the 7th and 8th grade, like, middle school students, they shouldn't be at our school because they cause nothing but havoc everywhere they go. And as, as far as the administration at my school goes, I feel like they can be a bit more involved in our classrooms. Like, I feel like they, I understand that they do a lot of work behind scenes, but they don't, they've lost contact with the students, and I think they can, they can increase their contact with the students. And, it's, it's just, it's, it's just becoming, East High School has just become such an undesirable place, somewhere I just don't wanna go. And it's just, it's really sad, because it's just getting worse and worse, it's disgusting how disrespectful everybody there is. And lastly, finally, I'd like to commend Dr. Pringle on her, continuing her composure throughout this situation as a leader. Thank you.
And if you can just speak directly into the mic, the mic is at max, so speak directly into the mic, and everyone will be able to hear you.
Hello, my name is Felicia Bevel, and I also attend East High School. Good evening, board members, Dr. Bizar, students, staff, and community members. First of all, I would also like to thank you all for letting me speak tonight. As valedictorian and the senior class president of East High School, I feel many serious issues have arisen during the past few weeks that need to be addressed. Before I talk about these issues, I would just like to praise Dr. Pringle and the administration on everything that they're doing. They're doing the best to their ability, and we can ask for nothing more. One of the more pressing issues is the new in-school suspension policy and the repercussions it has produced. Because students can no longer be sent home, students have taken it upon themselves to create mayhem, and when I say mayhem, I mean mayhem. I have seen on numerous occasions, students disrespecting teachers and administrators without any guilt or fear whatsoever. During 7th and 8th periods, there is an endless stream of kids running back and forth in the hallways, students who have no intention, intention of getting to class on time or getting to class ever. For the past few weeks, there has been at least one fight a day, sometimes more. Many students are concerned for their own safety. This is not a good learning environment, and I believe the effectiveness of the suspension policy should be reconsidered. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maya Fitz-Stevens. I'm a proud student of East High School, I'm a senior this year, and I've had a great experience at East High School. When I graduate, I'll take nine AP classes, and the academic opportunities I've had at East have just been unprecedented. And I've always enjoyed coming to school, and I've always felt safe at school, up until this year, where there have been several times where I felt unsafe and frightened at school, walking through the hallways and eating lunch in the cafeteria. And, I love my school, and I want it to be a safe place for all students to be at, and I'm concerned that it's not right now. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Let me, is Zachary, is Zachary McPherson here? Okay. Michael Cox?
Good evening. My name is Latasha Santana, and I'm a senior at East High School. Along with maintaining a GPA of a 3.43, I'm an athlete in varsity swimming team, a captain of the varsity basketball team. I also spend time mentoring young students at East High, and adore my school. Since the time at East High School, I've seen many things. This year, however, I'm concerned about my personal safety. I feel I shouldn't have to worry about walking down the hallways and being run at by a group of kids, what happens on a regular basis. I shouldn't have to go through that in anybody else. I worry about myself, friends, family, and teachers. My teachers are a big impact in my life, and are great supporters, and do as much as they can, even though there are many disruptions through, all through the day. I'm speaking to help you, to help us, make East High a better and safer place. There are serious issues that are clearly getting ignored. What has to happen for these issues to stop getting ignored and to be dealt with? As a community, we need to, we need to start being proactive and to act before someone seriously gets injured. No one likes to feel they're getting ignored, so just don't hear me out, listen, take this cry out for help. Even though, I mean, I may not be going to East High next year, I still feel it's necessary to be heard, because at one point, I attended this school and should feel proud of it. And as of right now, I'm not so pleased. Thank you, thank you, and before you make a choice, please do not ignore this again. Thank you for taking this time to listen, and, thank you for taking this time to listen to my thoughts and feelings, and I hope you come to a civilization, thank you.
Thank you. Talasa Leverage? Forgive me if I'm saying your name wrong, Talisha Le, Talisha Le, Talija, Talija Leverage, okay.
Hi, my name is Talija Leverage, and I'm also a proud student at East High School, but overall, our school has only been in for three months, and the school is completely chaotic and ludicrous how everything is being done. You have children who, who is just going wild because there's no structure and no compromises going on. Whatever is being done is being done under the table, and there's nobody meeting halfway. If we keep going on like this, our differences is gonna collide, and it's gonna be a catastrophe at this school. We're, we're at a point right now where we are calling out for help, and we feel like our voices are getting ignored. Some of us feel that every morning when we get up and come to school, it's a safe haven for us, but how is it a safe haven when kids are behaving the way they're behaving, and there's nobody doing anything about it, and there's too many kids to try and subside them and trying to make them sit down? There's too many. ISS, it's too many kids. Out-of-school suspension, it needs to be put back on. It doesn't matter if people think, oh, kid's gonna do whatever they wanna do if they do, if they have outside of school suspension, if they do it, they still doing it in school. What's the whole point? There's kids that don't even go there, they keep going to every lunch, fighting every single day. We are coming to school in the morning, and we have to question if our safety is in danger, and that's a school. For us to feel like that, it isn't right. So there's something that needs to be done, or else, the school is gonna be a catastrophe, and there's, there's nothing that's gonna be dealt with.
Thank you. Haley, Haley Waiver? Haley Waiver here? Daniel Humphrey? Mr. Humphrey?
I'm Daniel Humphrey from East High School. First of all, I was shocked at what went on today. I was locked in the lunchroom, but I would like to say, Mr. Bizar, you did an excellent job on calming down the students, but I just don't, still don't think it was enough. The students at East High School are outrageous, and on top of that, we have been moved out of our ROTC room just to house the ISS students. There are not enough students in that room for us to be kicked out of it. I went by the room today, there are only 10 students during my class period in that room. So I wanna know why have ROTC alone been kicked out of that room? Our program probably won't even exist next year at East High School, because we don't have enough students to support it. So I wanna know why East High School is in so much danger, and not just for me, I am a senior this year, but I wanna know for everybody else who's going to be going here next year, what, what's, what's gonna be given to them? What, what, school district-wide, other schools, Marshall, Edison, it's not just East that's like this. I get friends all the time talking about there was fights in their lunchrooms. The sentries don't do anything, they just walk around and kid along with us. What's gonna be done about this? What are you gonna do? What's everybody else gonna do? The teachers have, are fed up on their own, to the point where they rather the kids just sit there and do nothing and fail. What happened to No Child Left Behind? Where are the children but behind? Thank you.
Thank you. Haley, Haley Waiver?
Last night, some students told me that Dr. Pringle, our principal, sent home a mass automated message to all the students, encouraging us to come to this board meeting and speak positively about our school. I'm having a hard time finding anything positive. When I was in 6th grade, ready to transfer to 7th grade, all the high schools were turning over and accepting 7th and 8th graders. I was a part of the first class of 7th and 8th graders at East High. We all acted very well, we stayed where we were supposed to, but now the students, the 7th and 8th graders, they just cause more problems than they're worth, I believe. She wanted us to speak positively, but, and today we're under a three-hour lockdown, how can I speak positively about my school now? There was weapons found in the building, we've been increasing security, there are security scanners at three different exits. Every morning, I go through scanning, and there was a gun found in my school. I gave up my lunch this year and last year because I didn't wanna be a part of that. The gun was found in the cafeteria, as I've learned. I don't wanna be in a luncheon where something like that could happen to me. Instead, I'd rather pack my lunch every day and ask a teacher if I could eat in their room, or eat in the hallway. And even the hallways aren't safe, there are kids running up and down it constantly. 7th and 8th period, as you've already been told, there are children running up the halls, knocking down trashcans, banging on lockers, because you can hear the security guards chasing them, but what are they gonna do when they catch them? Put them in the ISS room? The ISS room supposedly has had so many students that they needed to take away the NJROTC room, which is a lecture hall. That room provides us with an office for our teachers, a place to store our training rifles for competitions, we have an entire room over the bandroom that stores our uniform and the rest of our supplies, and because it's government property, we have to have it secured.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lila, Lila Eaton? Lila Eaton? Lila here?
Yes.
Okay. Lila Eaton, followed by Sharonda Miller?
Okay, hi, I'm Lila Eaton, and I'm from School of Arts, I'm in 11th grade. I'm here, I'm not here to speak about East today, although that was a tragedy that happened and that should not have been allowed to happen, but I'm here to talk about ISS, and I just, first of all, I wanna say that I think ISS is rooted in good ideals, and that it has potential to be a beneficiary program if it can be utilized properly, and if we can look, maybe take a relook at how it is being enforced, and the guidelines and regulations that are being put into effect there. I think that, first of all, that ISS is a good, a good idea, because it does keep kids off the streets, and if we want to, if we wanna have higher graduation rates, it can potentially help raise graduation rates, but then again, we do wanna be able to maybe relook at some things that are issues. And it can potentially provide effective structured discipline if it is utilized correctly and can be enforced in the right manner, and it can help children stay away from trouble with the law and the police while, while keeping them in the school building. Now however, it is causing a lot of issues within the school building that need to be addressed, because, and within the school community, while keeping these, the kids who are causing problems and are, you know, having fights and altercations in school, and are then being put into ISS. Some, some of the things that I think that need to be addressed are that maybe we need to have social workers available for kids who are getting put into ISS, and counselors, because by putting them in ISS, I don't feel that it is effectively promoting, like, better change by sitting them in a room all day to do work where there aren't necessarily tutors to help them, there aren't necessarily, they're not getting the work that they need to do, they're not learning their courses, they're maybe in some cases be giving their work. Sometimes I have kids tell me they don't get work when they go to ISS, that's not happening, they're sitting down there, but not doing anything all day, they're not being forced to do work, and they're, okay.
Thank you. Sharonda Miller? Young lady in the pink, what's your name?
Kadree Roberts.
Okay, maybe we'll get to you, okay, you're coming up soon. Sharonda Miller? Are you here, Sharonda? Okay. Kadree Roberts?
Hi, my name is Kadree Roberts, and first I'd like to address Mr. Bizar today, and all the board for allowing me to address the issues that I have, and also my principal, Dr. Pringle, and all her efforts, I'd like to commend her today. First, I'd like to speak on behalf of my fellow peers and those that have mutual feelings. Observing the insurmountable behavioral issues that East High School is experiencing at this present time makes our school unsatisfactory, and also making the educational process impossible. There is no counsel for, or attention for students by staff that have potential to excel because of disciplinary issues. This adds to low academic and graduation rate. The teachers' battle is the students' war for proper education. I would like to see this, see the problematic students attend alternative educational facilities with no toleration in misbehavior. I would also like to see our middle school students instructed throughout the day in one classroom, which this will limit the corrupt hallways. I am confident that these issues will be resolved. As someone once said, "The harder the conflict, the greater the triumph." And I would like to personally ask Mr. Bizar today to take a moral high ground and sympathize with the East High School affiliates in resolving this dilemma, and I am sure that these issues will be resolved, because saying that East High School is a mortified school is overrated. We are able to succeed, and we will be able to succeed with your help, and please take my, my issues today and what I have to say, and please think about it and make a change. Thank you.
Thank you. John Paul, John Paul Gilbert? Is John Paul here? John Paul Gilbert? Tony Jackson, is Tony Jackson here? Tony? Tony Jackson? Tony Jackson? Okay. Nataia White? Nataia White, are you here? Wave your hands, Nataia. Okay, thank you. Nataia White will be followed by Paloma Hernandez.
Hello, my name is Nataia White, I'm here to speak about the safety and how it affects us. Today, East High School was dangerous because at lunch, people were shooting milks, people were smoking, people were fighting. A little boy got dumped upside down in the garbage can, and he was crying. I got hit with two milks in a water bottle to the head, and I see the sentries just not doing nothing. People running around the hallways, not doing anything, and it still affects us from getting our education. our education. The people at our school are stopping us from getting our education and when we want to learn, we still can't. And people are disrupting in our classrooms and the teachers don't do nothing about it. Sentries are retaliating, just like yesterday, kids were shooting snowballs. The sentries are retaliating and shooting snowballs back, so that just make the kids feel like they, it's okay and they can shoot the snowballs back too. I would like to see a change at East High School because it's really not a bad school. East High School has really good opportunities for people to get a good education and a lot of programs for people to get a good education, but people just don't take advantage of the opportunities that they have. They just run around and like be bad. I think we need to eliminate the bad kids and let the people who want to get an education get their education.
Thank you. Paloma Hernandez? Paloma Hernandez will be followed by Denise Cepeda.
Hi, my name's Paloma Hernandez and I'm here to talk about...
Speaking to the mic, Paloma, please.
The in-school suspension. ISS doesn't, I know it was supposed to be brought into school to keep kids, show them discipline, so they can do their work and not be doing bad things in school, but all it does is, kids in my school at Finance Franklin, they ask to be in ISS. They want to be in ISS. They think they don't do anything in ISS. All these kids get in trouble so they can get into ISS. Why do we have ISS? It's not helping in my eyes. My perspective as a student, it's not helping. Out-of-school suspensions should be brought back. It helps way more than it would, than ISS does right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Cepeda? Denise Cepeda will be followed by Ximaria Guero.
Hello, good evening. My name is Denise Cepeda and I attend International Finance at Franklin. I'm here today to just talk about ISS, meaning in-school suspensions, affects our learning process. Well, I have many opinions on ISS. I understand that ISS is so that students won't be outside doing bad things like violence, but I think that those students that are in ISS are trying to govern or take control over the school. I'm saying this because every time I'm walking the hallways, instead of adults controlling the students, students are controlling the teachers, which makes me, which makes other students believe that they could do the same thing. And also, students fighting sentries because ISS students believe they could do whatever they think, anytime, anywhere. This affects our learning process because we're always hearing commotions, which provokes other students to get up from their seats to see what's going on in the hallways. That's all.
Thank you. One thing I can say about these students is they know how to follow directions, so adults, remember that when you come up to speak. Xiomara Guero? Xiomara Guero? Followed by Caitlin Hinman?
Hello, I'm a student. My name is Xiomara Guerrero and I'm a student at East High.
Speaking to the mic a little bit more so that everyone can hear you.
I want to talk about the issue of safety. Today, there was a lot of food fights and my little brother, he'd never been to a high school before and now he always comes home crying and stuff about how he doesn't like it and I just want to make sure that, since I'm leaving, I want to make sure that it's safe for him. And, well, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin, Caitlin Hinman? Is Caitlin here? Okay, thank you. Alexander Wheat? Mr. Wheat? Is Mr. Wheat here? Okay. Mr. Wheat will be followed by Morgan Ward.
Hello, my name is Alexander Wheat. I'm a junior at East High School and I would like to address the, I would like to address my biggest problem at East High School, which is the rowdy, the rowdy hallways during the classroom, during the class time. The students in the hallways are disrupting our classes, they are causing our teachers to have to go out into the hall because the sentries are not doing their job properly to take care of them. So our teachers are actually having to leave our classrooms where they are teaching us or helping us get our education to go take care of them. I think the, our biggest problem is the fact that the ISS room does not actually hold the students that are supposed to be in ISS. Most of them are just roaming around the, roaming around the hallways instead of being where they're supposed to be. And the sentries, I think, are corrupt in a sense due to the fact that they are mostly friends with the students instead of actually doing their job to take care of them and get them out of where they need to, get them out of the hallways. And I just think that that needs to be changed.
Thank you. Morgan Ward? Morgan here? Morgan Ward will be followed by Anitra Anderson. Morgan?
Hi, my name is Morgan Ward and I'm a junior at East High School and I would like to address, again, the rowdy students and the disruptive classroom behavior of all the seventh and eighth grade students. Lunch periods are completely crazy, students are rioting, causing problems. One weekend, or one Friday, I actually was pushed and shoved by a sentry for no apparent reason and nothing was done about it whatsoever. And in the hallways, the students just constantly are running up and down and my AP teachers are being distracted and those are AP classes and those are very important to me and the students who were in those classes. And it's very difficult to try to construct our days and go through it with people constantly distracting you because the teachers and the faculty, they don't do anything about it and the sentries just try to be your friends. They don't really do anything about it, they'll see you with your cellphone or with something and they're not going to scold you for it. They want to be your friends, they don't want to be there to, to scold you or anything. And I see them jacking students up against lockers, thinking it's funny, they have no right to put their hands on those students. And people don't know how to construct themselves and it's very difficult to try and get your education to benefit yourself in the future when there are people distracting you. And if those kids don't want to be there, if they'd rather be in ISS, then let them go. And I asked a student why they thought that the kids were being that way and they said that they were testing the suspension policy. Now, I don't have much of opinion on that, but if students are trying to push the suspension policy, then maybe something should be done about that.
Thank you. Anitra Anderson? Anitra? Anitra Anderson? Louis Cleveland, Mr. Cleveland here? And Mr. Cleveland will be followed by George Tor. Louis?
Hello, my name is Louis Cleveland. I represent Franklin Finance. I'm willing to ask for your undivided attention. See, I have a goal. And my goal is to get my high school diploma and go to college. And see, with your policy, it's potentially taking that away. Students in my school personally are fighting. They have burned weapons at school and you're willing to send them to ISS. Why is you willing to do that? The same students who just have fought each other, going to ISS, same room, same classroom? That's not going to work. Seriously. All right? One thing. It's disrupting my educational time, seriously. I'm trying to learn, I'm trying to learn things, you know? And maybe when, when a fight happens, the teacher has to go out there, go out there and stop it and prevent it, that's taking away my education, things that I need to know so I can pass. You say you want graduation rates to go higher, right? Then keep suspension. I understand your ISS. Your ISS should go for students who need to blow off a little bit of steam and everything, but students who had fought, burned weapons, threatening, things like that, they should, they should be out, out school suspension. See?
Ladies and gentlemen, please, we have, we have a lot of speakers, please. Continue, Mr. Cleveland. And by the way, you take away his time when you do that.
See, I feel that you need to, you need to come to the schools. You need to really experience. Be the teachers. Come there, teach, see what, see what they go through every day, see what I go through, okay? Because I don't feel safe in school and that's a shame. There's students in my school who's willing to drop out because they don't feel safe.
Thank you. George? George Tor? George Tor will be followed by Brittany Irvin, Donalee Miller, Thomas St. John, and then Jarrett Telma. So George Tor first.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is George Tor. I'm from Franklin High School. With the no suspension, I don't believe that's a good idea because school is supposed to be a place of safety, not a place where people come and feel scared. And every day, I mean, school is already hot enough, waking up in the morning and coming to school every day to try to get an education so that we could better our lives and our parent lives. Because for some of us, it's not easy because some of our parents have to work 48 hours and 16 hours a day just to make sure food is on the table and light is on. But with no school suspension, that is not a good idea because kids are fighting every day. What we need in school is discipline. We don't need to allow those type of behaviors. School is a place of learning, not a place of play. So if kids are willing to take away from other kids' education, you guys need to keep them home and not bring them to school. But what you try to do is not a good idea because I don't feel safe in school as it is already. And I'm trying to graduate so I could better myself as a man in this world, but you want to take that away from me by keeping those kids, that is only going to force us who are doing the right thing to want to not do the right thing in school. And that is not a good idea for me or needed for my peers because I have many friends that want to drop out of school just based on the fact that they're doing what they're supposed to do to get by, while other kids are not doing that and you want them to be there with us. That to me is not fair and I believe you need to change that policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany Irvin? Is Brittany Irvin here? Brittany? Donalee Miller? Donalee? Thomas St. John? And Thomas, the last student speaker will be Jarrett Telma.
Okay, pretty much all I got to say, I'm going to get straight to the point, is you have students in the school threatening teachers to rape them, to kick their ass. That is unacceptable. You should not have the students in the school threatening teachers. Personally, I should know. I got jumped in seventh grade, nothing happened. Two broken fingers, nothing happened. Not one kid taken away. And then you have kids fighting in school, put, put in the same classroom? It's not going to work out. You got kids threatening to kill each other, you got gangs in the school. What are you doing? You're, you're not doing nothing with the gangs. You got them threatening to kill each other, throwing their bandanas or whatever the hell they are. You can't have that. You got kids that are actually in school to trying to learn. So I say you should bring back the out-of-school suspension. Get rid of the kids that don't want to be there, which is pretty much all of the kids. Am I right? At Marshall, where I go, 98% of the kids don't want to be there. They'd rather be at home on the streets with their boys. You don't want that. You don't want, we don't want that in school. I'm a senior, I'm trying to graduate. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Jarrett Telma? Is Jarrett here? Last call for Jarrett. Okay. Thank you, students, go home and get some homework done. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Superintendent?
Good evening. I think we have the greatest students in the country right here in Rochester. Thank you. First, want to apologize to my colleagues on the dais and colleagues sitting in the audience for the length of this meeting, hoping you'll be able to stay awake until the wee hours of the morning. I also want to thank publicly the Rochester Police Department, Jim Shepherd and his team of sentries or school safety officers at East. What happened today, what they did today was textbook. They were able to recover and take care and make sure everybody was safe. So I really want to thank Chief Moore, the RPD, and our folks, Jim Shepherd's team, for all the work they did today at the school, as well, of course, as the, as the principal of the school. So good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education, members of the public. We originally scheduled a presentation in our Benchmark Assessment Program for tonight, but tabled it because we knew that the in-house suspension program would be the focus of this evening. Recent incidents at East High School makes this more relevant. Each year in our district, we suspend the equivalent of one-third of all students. That's 11,000 suspensions for about 33,000 kids. At East High School, they suspend the equivalent of every student in the building. That's 2,000 suspensions for fewer than 1,900 students. All of these students spend the majority of their suspensions at home or on the streets. Some end up in our jails, I've met quite a few of them. I met a young man yesterday who told me that he was kicked out of school from February through June of last year. He said that he was 17 years old, had no idea how many credits he had, and was not sure when and if he would graduate from high school. Tonight, you may hear, many people blame our recent policy on in-house suspension on the incident at East High School. You should know that the students involved were not in-house suspension students or never suspended this year. I am sure that you've heard Mr. Binsky's rhetoric about retaliation against an RTA rep. While I cannot speak about an ongoing investigation, I can assure you that it is not our nature. This is not our modus operandi. We did no such thing. We are better than that. Tonight, you may hear that we need alternate settings for all of these kids. While this is true for some of our students, the large majority of our kids are suspended for non-serious incidents. If we're to move what most here will describe as troubled students, we would warehouse more than 6,000 kids a year in alternative settings. If that is not racism, I don't know what is. Prior to my, excuse me.
Order, order, order?
Prior to my arrival, virtually all students who were short-term suspended received no alternative instruction during their suspension. This practice clearly violated New York education laws, which required that alternative instruction begin immediately but no later than the third day of a suspension. Students in this district missed approximately 55,000 school days last year. About 45% of students who are suspended are students with disabilities, even though this subgroup makes only, makes up only 16% of our population. The New York State Education Department recently cited the RCSD in six areas of special education for the third consecutive year. The state, the state threatens severe sanctions if we don't fix these issues. This fact was reiterated today in a meeting with the State Education Department. Additionally, the district has scarcely complied with federal IDEA regulation governing the discipline of students with disabilities. These regulations include, for example, provisions that allow for students with disabilities to be suspended for up to 10 days and be afforded the same alternative instruction as their non-disabled peers, and the new in-house suspension program is designed to ensure this access. Once students with disabilities are suspended for more than 10 days, they must receive special education services per their IEP. Also, districts must make determinations about whether students' behavior are the direct result of the disability or whether the behavior resulted from the district's failure to properly implement the student's IEP. We are continuing to develop the infrastructure to support these requirements. The in-school suspension program affords students access to IEP-mended related services during their suspension. Best practices indicate that maintaining consistency in educational settings and programs significantly improve achievement. We receive nearly $700 million each year in funding from New York State, the City of Rochester, and the federal government. The money was not given to teach some of the children, it was given to teach all of the children. Consequently, the job of an urban educator is not an easy one. I was a teacher, I know. It is not for everyone, however, but we are all paid to reach all of the children. We can no longer write off a portion of our population. I am not a stubborn person, but I know what works in terms of improving achievement. I am not, really. All I have seen are finger-pointings with few offering alternatives. I have listened but have heard no other solution to the injustices that we've dished out to these children. What I find most disturbing about tonight is that there are people who will be, who will claim to be advocates for children, but we'll talk about and support the tossing aside of children. How ironic. Finally, I firmly believe that we've been lucky, that we've not had a class action lawsuit brought against us based on suspensions. Perhaps it is coming. It's no wonder why we had a 39% graduation rate. The only, the problems at East are completely fixable, but all at the school, all at the schools. Teachers, students... But all at the school, all at the schools, teachers, students, administration, sentries have to roll up their sleeves and make it work. We stand ready to support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now move on to board reports, starting with our standing committee reports. We're going to begin with our student rep, Mr. Los. Do you have a report for us this evening?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Los.
Let me just say that I am a proud student of the Rochester City School District.
Good.
This past month, I had the pleasure of escorting our board president. Oh, before I start off, kudos to Number Five School and their performance. It is a delight to see our students. They are multi-talented in this Rochester City School District, and this is why we are here. As well as, I give my other kudos to Dr. Pringle, all the staff at East, the RPD, Superintendent Bresard, and all his administration for handling measures. I'm very sure that things will be fixed. Again, we don't look at issues as problems. We look at them as progress. Let me start with, this month, I had the extreme pleasure of escorting our board president, Mr. Evans, through the halls of Wilson, which was a reflection to me that I want to be successful just like him. And we truly never forget where we come from or who got us there. Tuesday evening, November eighteenth, I attended the Town Hall Summit at the World of Inquiry School Number Fifty-Eight. It was about bringing awareness to community members about the importance of after-school programs. They are to show that their support, and it's truly, and I repeat, truly about every child. Student Leadership Congress, my organization, met yesterday, Wednesday, November nineteenth, where we discussed where each subcommittee was in planning with their activity, whether it was volunteering at a homeless shelter, going to Wilson Commencement Park, hosting a student forum, or organizing a college tour. The subcommittees are setting dates for their next meetings. I want to extend my thank you to Mr. Bresard for being in attendance and answering the questions that were brought up. Also, Mr. Bresard did a great job with the Superintendent-to-Student Report where he gave us a challenge, and that challenge I found to be very important. It is to keep getting informed with everything going on, to help the district make great decisions for our kids. Mr. Bresard talked with SLC members about the in-school suspension policy, where SLC members asked questions and later provided feedback. Quickly, the Board of Education, I've given you my fellow board members' papers about what we felt are issues, or not issues, but our suggestions to progress with our in-school suspension policy. We said better than out-of-school suspension. It is keeping us educated and occupied. Some people felt that we're not getting any work, we're not getting help. It will work only if we do it properly and the right way. It helps students. We need to not make sure that our students are not falling behind because graduation rates are extremely important. Neither in-school or out-of-school suspension gives you social or emotional support, and that was my pointer. I believe that every student needs social and emotional support in and out of school, whether they are suspended or not. Rumors cause drama after you're out of ISS. If you are in ISS and you've been suspended, there are continuous conversations about the issue that has, that was brought up or the confrontation that happened during school. So when you come back to school, if students are still rambling and talking about it, it may create another issue. We felt as if, one of my fellow students suggested that at one of our, one of our high schools, because of the in-school suspension policy, their parents have come in and sat in the classroom and have gone with them to their classrooms, and it has calmed down the, the, what's, the chaos that's supposedly going on in the classroom. We also suggested peer mediation, staff to see that it's, staff, some people felt that it's a way, ISS is a way for staff to get rid of kids. Used to the extreme, if you're out of uniform, one student said you get in-school suspension. Peer mediation resolves conflicts, no need for ISS. Even if you get your work from your teachers, there's no teacher support. Teachers and administrators are making a fool of ISS. They just don't want to deal with students. Consequences for minor stuff are supposedly too extreme. There are times it's needed and appropriate rooms allow, room allows for the influence of bad kids on others in quotation marks, need for behavioral coach in the room, which I strongly agree with. If you are going to have any type of student in ISS, you need a coach. How is the student supposed to know what they did or go back into the classroom on a need-to-know level basis, knowing what they did wrong and correcting their behavior? The next thing is, why would you put two same people who fought in the same room? It's important that you calm down and you have the time to yourself to think about what has happened. Perception is that it's a place to play. I heard yesterday in my SLC meeting that in ISS rooms, that there are kids bringing PSPs, iPods, MP3 players, communications, cell phones into their ISS room. And as far as I'm concerned, the district policy is no cell phones. And that is that. SLC will next have their meeting next month, December seventeenth, at Central Office at three-thirty PM. I have to say, being the student representative on the Board of Education, I represent all students across the district, and I'm not stuttering. I represent every single student across this district. And I am here for our kids because I truly believe that it is about every child. We need to instill as a district that if we are having trouble, we need to work together and collaborate to come up with a solution that will benefit not our administration, not our parents, not anybody else but our scholars. Our scholars are the ones that need to move forward. And it is a fact that we believe in success and every child has the right to get the best possible education and support that is available to them. I am a voice for my peers and every student. I will continue, and I repeat, continue to cooperate with the board itself and the RCSD to make sure that everyone knows that our focus and our goals in this Rochester City School District is our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams in the Audit Committee.
Yes. And she said that she was nervous and overwhelmed by the crowds tonight.
It's my dignity.
Mr. President, fellow board members, all board members were invited to attend the Audit Committee meeting on Monday, the seventeenth. We met as a committee of the whole to, with Fried Max and Batagla, our CAFR auditors, to review and discuss the two thousand seven, two thousand eight financial audit. At that point, our outside auditors presented the highlights of the two thousand seven, two thousand eight financial review. The board then met privately with Fried Max and Batagla in a, in an executive session in compliance with the fiscal accountability legislation. We are now in the process of scheduling two meetings, one with the full board again to discuss the issues with our auditor general, and the second meeting to discuss with the superintendent and his staff, the management response, as well as the corrective actions. We anticipate moving or approving the two thousand seven, two thousand eight financial review at the December board meeting. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Powell in the Finance Committee.
First, I want to thank Sarah for saying some things that I felt needed saying. I'm really, really quite upset at the behavior I'm seeing in this room from adults, and I know some of it is unintended. Case in point.
Commissioner.
I know some of it was unintended. I think there are occasions when a student had something to say and applause broke out. I can only hope the applause was to support the student and not necessarily what was said, because when I hear an outburst of applause after a student says, "Students should be eliminated," I get really, really wound up, really wound up. It's been said already, we're here for every child. And I don't need to harp on that, but you all aren't even thinking about what you're reacting to. You're acting like a mob.
Commissioner, Commissioner Powell, can you move on to the, or, Commissioner Powell, can you move on with the Finance Committee report, please?
The Finance Committee met on Thursday, November thirteenth. You're acting like a mob.
Commissioner Powell, please, the Finance Committee report.
We reviewed the, uh, Resolutions four oh nine through four twenty. We approved the October two thousand eight finance, financial reports, and I make a motion now that the board received those reports.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor to receive the monthly financial reports, which you should have received in your packet. The motion was made by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Comments, questions concerned around the Finance Committee reports? Hearing none, I'll call to question all those in favor of the Finance Committee reports for the month. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioner.
We also have, the committee also approved a student activity funds report. I move that the board accept that report.
There's a motion on the floor to achieve, approve the student activities report. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Any questions, comments, or concerns around the student activity report? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
The rest of our resolutions are routine, except that we did have two budget amendments, one for last year, um, due to the effect of the RTA settlement, and again, this year, for this current fiscal year, due to increased grant aid. That's in with the Finance Resolutions four oh nine through four twenty. Our next Finance Committee meeting, December eleventh, five-thirty PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner White in the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. The Excellence in Student Achievement Committee did not meet during the month of November because it fell on November the fourth, which was election day, and we were all very busy that day. But we will be meeting on December the second, that's a Tuesday, at five-thirty PM. We would encourage those of you who are in attendance today to attend that meeting as well. We will be discussing the legal dropout age. We'll also be discussing the adoption of particular textbooks in our schools. And finally, there will be a brief but interesting presentation by the representatives of, representatives of Iglesia Educational Centers. Again, I would encourage you all who are here today to participate and continue to participate tomorrow as well. God bless.
Thank you. And I would note that for my fellow colleagues, those of you wishing to take part in math, the math textbook adoption, which the Quality Assurance Committee will be looking at, are in display in the board conference room if you wanted to get a look at the books.
When is that meeting?
Quality Assurance meets December second.
December second, five-thirty.
Five-thirty, which is a Tuesday. Commissioner Elliott in the Board Governance Committee.
The Board Governance Committee met last month, and we basically discussed the same items that we're going to be discussing in our November twenty-fourth meeting. We will review the superintendent's evaluation tool again, and I should just point out, we did, in an executive session, evaluate the superintendent, one of our quarterly evaluation sessions that we have had, that our first one that we've had with him. We will discuss an RFP and what we would like the criteria to be for our board consultant position to take a review and assess organizationally this board and its staff, and in terms of various committees that we may or may not want, or, and look at some that may be needed. We also, I mentioned to President Evans just in briefing, but I will have it on the agenda that we look at perhaps a board and a cabinet and superintendent retreat. So that will be on the agenda this Monday for discussion. And lastly, I just want to thank student representative Sarah Delos for attending our last month's Board Governance Committee. She is truly passionate about the students in the district. She, she, the district and the students of a district have a wonderful representative in Commissioner Delos, and I am very proud to be associated with her and will welcome her at our meetings at any time. So thank you so very much for attending.
Thank you for having me. I'll be back.
And you said you were shy. Commissioner Campos in the CIGR Committee.
CIGR, we'll be meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, and our agenda is as follows. We have an agenda, we're going to create the agenda for the City Council joint session that we'll be having, preliminarily putting together our federal and state legislative agenda. One of the things that was brought up that was done previously was community conversations and having those, the board with the community. So that's one of the things that we will be discussing. Also, we'll have an update from the Office of Parent Engagement, so we're looking forward to that, and an update from Ken Warner in terms of the careers in construction and the program that they have at Edison. One of the things that I do want to mention is that we did meet with City Council, myself and President Evans and Vice President White, and it was a very fruitful conversation, and we're really looking forward to being able to collaborate as community decision-makers. And one of the other things, just very quickly, is that I am absolutely inspired by the leadership that our students, between School Number Five and all of the students that came here today, demonstrated. We truly are growing leaders. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campos and colleagues, you should have been sent two possible dates for the joint school board, city council session, and Ms. Washington, Ms. Washington should be firming up that date when she hears from her counterpart over at the city early next week. Commissioner Brennan in the Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee did not meet since the last business meeting, and I mean this kindly, but in the future, at our committee meetings, members, please bring your calendars to the meeting so we can establish when our committee will meet, at that date.
Thank you.
Rather than have a situation that we had this month where the dates got gobbled up very quickly and we were actually unable to meet, this shouldn't happen. And I hope that in the future it won't.
Thanks. I would ask that members of the Policy Committee, even if after the, after the meeting tonight, if you could please get with the board clerk and select a date to meet in December. Thanks. Commissioner Elliott, you missed one other thing from your report.
I missed one other thing that the student representative reminded me of. We did talk about another gathering meeting. We met with union representatives, we met with the district, meaning the cabinet. We also met with parents and the board, and that actually was a very historic and a very, very good meeting. It was a first step, and so we're looking at, our special assistant to the board is looking at talking with those people who were involved in the last one and seeing if we can do that again. I think that that's going to really lend to our ability to work even more effectively together, so I look forward to that opportunity where we can all get together again. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Just very briefly, I want to thank Vice President White for attending the session on the pencil program. I heard Mr. Superintendent rave reviews. I heard it was a packed house. It is absolutely critical that the business community and the entire community really be involved in our schools. There are folks in this community that are just really interested, despite of what you see on TV or hear in the media, that are really interested in seeing city schools succeed and achieve, and they really want to be involved. So I'm looking forward to hearing about pencil. Thank you, Vice President White, for representing the board there. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And Vice President White, I heard that you stole the show. A guy came back and he said that you did a great job pumping up the crowd, so thank you. Also, thank you, Sarah Delos, for also representing as well, and Commissioner Campos, White, and Powell, and as well as the superintendent for attending the Connect with Kids Town Hall Summit. The summit was held, hold at, held at School Number Fifty-Eight. I'm a, I'm a product of after-school programs, so I can tell you they work. The time between three and six are absolutely critical, and it was great to see so many students there. The documentary on this will be on, first off, let me take WOKR, it used to be WAK, OKR, WHAM, Channel thirteen, who will be airing the documentary on after-school programming Sunday at nine AM. You can watch it before you go to church. Tune into that. It will be very instructive, hearing, hearing students talk in first person about how after school programs affected them. I'm a big believer in this board support. We understand that critical time between three and six. So thank you for that, and that concludes my report I have. I would only ask my colleagues to make sure that you refer, we have a busy, busy December and a busy rest in November, so please refer to your. and a busy rest of November, so please refer to your calendar and govern yourselves accordingly. We'll now move on to the considerations of resolutions. We were handed a page that, that we forgot, you got this page in your packet, but we forgot to staple it to the last page. This is a very important page, because it has gifts on it that we're receiving, so we want to make sure we vote on those. So if you can just add pages 59 and 60 to your packet that was, that was detached. We'll begin with Human Resource Resolutions, Resolutions 375 through 408. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 375 through 408.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner, Vice President White. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. Discussion around Resolutions 375 through 408. I'll remind folks that these are Human Resources Resolutions, so any questions need to be germane in nature. If they are about a specific individual, we will need to adjourn and speak about it further in executive session. So questions around Resolutions 375 through 408?
President, I just have a quick follow-up.
Yes.
One of the questions that I had asked was if we conducted exit interviews, and the answer was yes. I'm just curious how we use those in order to benefit us in the future.
And did you want to answer to that now, or did you want to?
It could be something that's later, in interest of time, but I just would like a...
I think that's an excellent question. If we can please get something, Mr. Superintendent, on how we use those exit interviews, it'd be very instructive for us to know why people leave the district. Any other general questions around Resolution 375 through 408? Hearing none, I'll call the questions. On Resolutions 375 through 408, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any noes on the Resolutions 375 through 408?
Well, President Evans, always my noes, well, not always, but in many instances, it still gets back to the fact that these resolutions are being approved after the fact. And so my decisions are no, are the following, or, let me just say, that philosophically, I just don't agree with it. So as follows, my noes are on 375, 377 through 385, 386 through 388, 393 through 407.
396 through 407?
393 through 407.
393 through 407.
And again, it's either philosophical, or we did not get these resolutions in a timely fashion.
Okay. I have ayes on all with noes. Madam Clerk, on Resolution 375 and Resolutions 377 through 385, no on 386 through 388 and Resolutions 393 through 407, for Commissioner Elliott. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Resolutions 409 through 414, which are educational facilities resolutions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, moved by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner White. Our student rep always casts an advisory vote on all resolutions, with the exception of Human Resources Resolutions. Madam Student Rep, what is your advisory vote on Resolutions 409 through 414?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any other discussions around Resolutions 409 through 414? Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolutions 409 through 414 indicate, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolutions 409 through 414 passed. Resolution 415 deals with procurement and supply. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 415.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President White. Any questions or discussions around Resolutions 415? Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution 415, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. Resolutions 416 through 419 are budget resolutions and amendments, which were discussed at length in the Finance Committee, so I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 416 through 419.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott, moved by Commissioner Powell. Discussion around Resolutions 416 through 419?
President Evans?
Yes. Commissioner Brennan?
Seeking recognition, yes. On the document containing the resolutions prior to the meeting that we received a few days before the resolution, there were Resolutions 416 through 35, and the copy of the resolutions we received tonight, 416 through 35, were not present. Then after the meeting began, we again received a packet where the resolutions were in the packet, and in light of the fact that we didn't have the usual meeting that we have to, you know, at 7:30 to discuss the resolutions, I wondered if there might be an explanation for why that took place. We've also received, have had presented to us, or I did, on the dais here after the meeting started, answers to some of the questions. It's not my purpose to be critical here, but it's difficult to give these resolutions the scrutiny they deserve when the answers to questions are provided for us on the dais after the meeting started.
Vice President White?
Yeah, Commissioner Brennan, I should fall on the sword for that one. Those questions that were, the answers that came late, I want to thank Dr. Dice Fausset. I submitted my questions late.
Okay.
So that's why the answers came late. So that, that is not a fault of the administration.
Right. In, in the packet that you got, it was just a copying mistake that gave, we, all of the resolutions that we originally got were not in the packet.
We did get, we did get in advance, I understand that.
So, so, so...
I do understand that.
Yeah, so it was just a copying error, so all the resolutions that you got in your, in your original Friday delivery are actually all here.
I do understand.
But the packets that we usually have on the dais were copied incorrectly, so that's why we went...
I understand. I thought it was an irregularity worth at least bringing up, in light of the fact that we didn't have the usual 7:30 AM review. As you know, I have a strong inclination to accept the administration's position on these resolutions, but I, you know, it is important that we try to, Van asks such good questions that, now, they're good even late, but, you know, it's, it's important for us to, you know, to have the information we need in a, in a timeframe when we can, we can examine them. So thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
No problem. We killed some extra trees, is what we did.
Excuse me, Mr. President? I'm just curious, when are we, how long do we get before we have to turn our questions and like, do we...
I always say, as soon as possible, we try to get them in at least a week prior to the Board meeting, but questions should be returned, sent to the, sent to the clerk as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor. Resolutions 416 through 419 are budget resolutions, and we already have a motion on the floor. So any other questions or discussions around Resolutions 416 through 419?
Just for clarifications, the budget resolutions in that range, 416 through 419, are the, the budget amendments for 2007, 2008 school year, the ones specifically around the RTA case. They, there's another set of budget resolutions that's not up for vote just yet for the school year 2008, 2009.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments around 416 through 419? Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolutions 416 through 419 related to the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll now move on to Resolutions 420 through 445, which are other resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 420 through 445.
So moved.
Yes.
Mr. President, I just want to clarify that despite the fact that trees were killed, we still are missing three of the resolutions. We did get them in our, our packet, but they're not in front of us now. If we want to vote on resolutions we cannot see.
Uh, no. If, as a matter of course, if resolutions are not in front of us in a timely manner and are not in this packet, they'll have to wait till a next meeting. We have an executive session coming up, a special meeting coming up next week, so being that those resolutions are not in the packet, it may be an inconvenience to some folks, but those resolutions will have to wait, and we can vote on them on, I believe our meeting is on Monday or Tuesday. They can wait. I'm not going to ask you all to vote on something that's not in front of us.
I can make a suggestion then. Since Resolution 445 is part of a larger picture, I move to table Resolution 445, so that we vote on it with the other budget resolutions.
Okay, that's, that's fine. There's a motion to table Resolution 445. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. We'll go straight to a vote on tabling Resolution 445, being that it relates to the other ones, and we'll take that up next week. All, all those in favor, a table does not have any discussion, it goes straight to a vote. All those in favor of tabling Resolution 445, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we are now considering Resolutions 420 through 444. We will consider those other ones at our special meeting next week. And, so can I, did I get a motion to approve Resolutions 420 through 444?
We don't have a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I have a motion? Moved by Commissioner Powell. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. Questions, comments, or concerns around Resolutions 420 through 444?
I have some questions.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
The first one, and I'll try to be brief, Resolution 420, the Omni Group. Is there, did we reach out to any MWE firms to have them submit a...
A bid?
Polls on the RFP?
Mr. Superintendent, you want to have your designee?
Sure. Don't have my crib notes, Dr. Dice Fausset. John, I believe this is yours, you perhaps in the controller? It's 420, page 45.
Commissioner, we went out for RFP and did, did interview a number of possible candidates for this. I do not have the information on whether any of those were MWBS. I'll have to get that for you, sir.
Did the MWE officer sign off on it though? I'll do.
I'd have to check, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so we can...
So we'll, we'll come with...
Could I follow up with a question? What are the consequences of, if this item were to be tabled? Would, I mean, would we be out of compliance?
Out of compliance on the, the regulations to, for the district to offer 403B?
Are we currently out of compliance right now?
Not, not until the, the end of December.
So if, if we were to take this up in our December meeting, we could still be in compliance?
On Monday, next week?
Or next week?
Could this be, could this wait till next week, our special meeting next week?
I don't want you not to have an answer.
Okay, that's fine.
Would you like that?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We can take up 420 at a meeting next week and come up with the answers for the Commissioner prior to that.
Okay, we can get those answers by, by Monday, before Monday. That'd be great.
Motion to sever and table 420?
There's a motion to sever and table 420 until next week when we get answers to those questions. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor of tabling Resolution 420, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now, we are now voting on Resolutions 419 through 444. Any other questions on Resolutions 419 through 444?
Right over here. And typically, I ask these at the study session, so I apologize for all of the questions. One, we have three of the executive coaches for the Dream Schools, and I'm just curious, what is their, what's going to be their role in, is it coaching the principals, the administrators? What's going to be their focus?
The primary focus, if you go back to the original concept of the Dream Schools, is to coach the principal. I can provide, Michelle Hancock, do you want to say a bit more about the three coaches for the principals?
Good evening, everyone. The Dream School coaches are assigned to the principals of the six Dream Schools. They will work directly with the principals and the leadership cohort teams in each building to help facilitate reflection practices and to really help them align their practices with leadership skills. Now, all three executive coaches have a wealth of experience, and they were, they, they were interviewed, and we went through an extensive interview process, and I think they're going to do a great job. Okay?
I have another, a follow-up question, and I'm sure Michelle's going to have to answer it.
Okay, Michelle.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
One of the follow-up questions is in regards to Resolution 427. With the executive coaches and what you're doing with the Dream Schools, is there any kind of correlation or anything that's going to complement what's being done by the executive coaches at the Dream School with Walton, with the educational leadership program that you're looking to do?
Principal leadership.
What's the complement going to be?
I can start, and you can finish, Michelle. They are really two different things, but they have to complement each other.
Yeah.
It's a short answer. The Resolution 427 comes out of Wallace Grant from the City Education Department to create a Leadership Academy here in the city with St. John Fisher four principals. We are looking at pass, a possible teacher leadership section to that, but primarily right now, it is for principals. The executive coaches offer those six schools to work primarily onsite coaching the principals, while the other really is by creating an overall curriculum for principals, aligning their skill set to the reforms that we try and try to put in place. Michelle?
But please be aware, Commissioner Campos, that we do have, some of the executive coaches are serving on our committees for the Leadership Academy. So it's all, it will be aligned.
That's great. That's one, just to have those, the synergy between those two and complement and take advantage of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have one, one question on that, because you have Resolution 423, 424, and 425 are the executive coaches, and you have 430 as the sort of, the executive coach of the executive coach? Or what?
Lou Smith actually runs an organization called, it's a school transformation, turnaround school, transformation program. So Lou actually is the one who helped design the Dream Schools concept for us. So he's been part of the initiative from, from day one, and this is a resolution to begin to pay him, actually. So he hasn't been paid yet. The, the, the work that he's doing is overall in working with teachers and principals in the teams at the schools, coordinating the entire project for us. The coaches are part of, are part of the, the initiative, but they're working directly with principals onsite at the schools. So Lou works with the entire team, works centrally in building central capacity, as well as the different school team capacities, while the executive coaches work directly with leadership at the schools onsite.
Thank you. Further questions on Resolutions 419 through 444? Okay, Commissioner Campos?
Okay. One comment on 429. I am just, I want to commend the superintendent, because this resolution is built to build capa, is to build the capacity of the ELL teachers, because ELLs are only able to go to two high schools, so the fact that you're being proactive, you're doing this, is absolutely phenomenal to give them a choice besides Jefferson or Monroe. And then my one question for 442, in terms of the coordinators of attendance, I'm wondering if this is filling a vacancy, or is this something that's based on need and putting a focus on it?
The answer is yes, both. Our new chief for Youth Development and Family Services has been busy recreating the attendance offices in the, in the building. So what you see here are replacements, jobs which have been recreated, not additions, but a restructuring for that entire office. If I may go back to the 429 resolution about the ELL, I also want to thank the principals who have agreed to take on L kids come September. We didn't force anyone to do this, but they're jumping up and coming up and doing this. So the fact is, we hope that down the road, next few years, that all of our high schools will accept all children.
That's phenomenal.
Your, your question related to Resolution, what number?
442.
Okay.
And 443 and 444, they're all coordinating.
And those are, yeah, and those are the ones that we're going to vote on, just so you know, at our next meeting.
Okay.
442 through 445, because they weren't before me when we got here, we're voting on those at a special meeting.
Okay, I have, sorry, two, of course, on two more resolutions.
Okay, two more, two more questions on resolution, and Commissioner Brennan, you also had a question?
Briefly, unless, unless, no, let Ellen go. Ellen may ask the questions that I'm anticipating, so.
You, to your distinguished colleague?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, Commissioner?
Okay. Resolution 421. Why can't we use our existing, well, some of our existing facilities, as opposed to leasing out outside space?
Yeah, it's coming up every year. Space is, is, is difficult. We try not to use auditorium style. We try not to use auditorium-style settings for meetings with folks, because it doesn't lend itself to the kinds of conversations that is deepest across tables. So it's one of the few places that actually offers this kind of space at honestly a relatively cheap price. It's why we go back so often to this location. And the fact is, it provides the kinds of settings where people can sit across and face each other and have conversations around the work.
Yeah, I'll say that I speak to the new teachers. Every year since I've been on the board, I speak to the new teachers, and I know they meet at this space, and it really does lend itself to have much better conversations and coordination.
Plus, parking is free. We actually had a principals' meeting here this week, and parking was a huge challenge. And per contract, we actually reimburse principals for parking, so it actually provides a savings for us.
Anything, you had, you had one other question?
One other, Tom wanted to go ahead.
Okay, Tom, your question's on 419 through 444?
Just, okay, just, thank you, Michelle Williams. Just briefly, I noticed that the contracts in Resolutions 423 and 429 were without a town companies, and, no, I'm seeing 555 13th Street, Northwest Washington, for America's Choice.
Actually, the contract is for Loretta Johnson, who was a former deputy superintendent for this district. She lives, she's a Rochesterian, lives in the city. Because she works for America's Choice, we had to contract with her employer for her to work with us. So the other individuals are retired principals from the district, so we're able to contract directly with them. With Loretta Johnson, because she works for America's Choice, we had to go through her employer to make this work.
And I'm not, and that's a requirement?
Say again?
That's a requirement, okay.
Yes, we couldn't, we couldn't...
It's not necessarily a bad thing to have an out-of-town contractor, but if it was, I'd just like to know a little more about their, you know, their experience in the areas that they'll be offering expertise. And coming from Washington, which is a place where some very interesting things are happening in the education community, and probably in the consultant community, too, I'd be a little interested in, you know...
Sure, the work is not out of Washington, DC. It's with, actually, I mean, I'm giving her name, Loretta Johnson. She's well-known, I'm sure you know.
You understand why I asked a question?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Nothing to do with Michelle Rhee.
I didn't say.
But I will. She lives here, and again, the work is for her to work with two principals directly in the city. She is the only one who'll be working with those principals, not America's Choice. This is not a literacy initiative. It really has to do with a leadership initiative, and...
America's Choice is a literacy?
Well, for the most part, they have a huge literacy initiative going on with AC America's Choice, but the work is with Loretta Johnson, with two principals, and not with the work of America's Choice. But again, I guess a matter of semantics and contract, because she works for them, we had to contract with them instead. We went back and forth on this one for a while before we actually said, okay, we have to do it this way.
Okay.
Just a...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Brennan is not finishing.
Very briefly, again, I had a similar question with respect to Resolution 429, where the address is 101 Westand Avenue, New York.
Which one is that?
Margarita.
429.
Where is that? Will we be attending to that number later?
Nope, that's right.
Okay, that's within the, okay. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Campos, do you have one other question?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
I just had a point of clarification.
Okay.
I didn't get my question answered, I don't think.
Is Marilyn or Lottis here? Perhaps you can talk a little bit about Margarita Calderon and Associates and what they do. And your question was about the address, right, Commissioner?
Commissioner Brennan, your question was about the address?
Yeah, my question, it seems, again, it's the same question I had earlier about the other one. It appears to be an out-of-town company, and I just wondered, since it's out of town, we may be less familiar with it, and...
I believe one of the commissioners, and there, Commissioner Campos raises as an inquiry, and while I cannot speak, you are correct, it's an out-of-town address. It's my understanding that Ms. Calderon is a well-respected educator around issues of educating ELL students.
Okay.
Yes.
I, again, I just asked a question because, for the same reason I asked the earlier question.
Yes.
This is indeed an out-of-town company, but it has a background, it has the track record.
Yes.
I'll take Commissioner Campos's word for it.
And again, just to be clear, I spent quite a few years in New York City, but I'm actually not familiar with this group.
We don't hold that against you.
I trust my deputy, so...
Please understand.
Yes.
I have a question.
Hold on, hold on. Thank you. Commissioner Brennan, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Campos?
I had asked a question in regards to Resolutions 442 through 444, which are the coordinators of attendance, and you said we wouldn't be voting on those tonight, so I just wanted to make that clarification. Are we or aren't we? Because, and then, when are we going to? Because they start on December 1st.
We're going to do that next, next week. We have a special meeting next week.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Commissioner, before the student rep, Commissioner Williams, you had, do you have any more questions?
Yes, but I...
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Commissioner Williams, go ahead.
So on Resolution 431, a series of questions, but again, I'll try to be brief. When we lease, and this is 690 St. Paul. Initially, when we leased a property, did we lease it as-is, or did we stipulate that the landlord has to meet certain health and safety codes?
Well, the lease was actually, there was an executive session brief for the board on the actual lease. I don't have the details in front of me, but this was an anticipated cost that came across right before the beginning of school. In one of my Friday letters, I actually explained why this actually came the way it did. Perhaps Chuck, would you like to elaborate a little bit on 431?
The district entered into a lease for 690 St. Paul with Genesee Valley Real Estate Company, effective July 1 of this year. There were some representations, some warranties that were in the lease with regard to environmental concerns that the landlord was to comply with.